It is now eight o'clock. Time to have our pre-agenda meeting. Commissioner Hartson will have the invocation. Commissioner Hartson will also have the pledge. And we have the approval of the minutes. Discussion or adjustments to the agenda that we've...
No change or additions at this time. Oh, budget amendments. We do have budget amendments that we will go over during...
You mean this book here?
The book of budget amendments. Yes, sir.
I know what the definition of a few is now.
Maybe we should go with several.
Plenty.
Okay, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And then, under Special Presentations, motion to approve Resolution 2021-23, a resolution requesting naming the O'Berry Road Bridge over Highway 117 for Trooper Nolan James Sanders. And I believe the family will be here for that as well.
I talked to... Okay, and I talked to her Sunday at church, and she was wanting to know how many could she bring? And I said, "Bring whatever you need to." And I will read that resolution if it's all right with everyone. And I also have a letter from Dudley Fire Department. Do we need to just file that, or does that need to be...
Is that in support?
Yes.
We can just file that or add that to the application.
I can't even find it on what I've done with this. Okay.
Then, number two is recognition of Solid Waste Management Director Tim Rogers. As everybody knows, Tim will be retiring at the end of the month. And the chairman does have a plaque that we will be giving him, recognizing his 37 years of service to the county.
Thirty-seven years.
Thirty-seven years, yes, sir. And then, we will have introductory presentation on redistricting for Wayne County by Carolyn Mackey and Tara Bright with local redistricting service. This is a pointer and sprue group that we went into contract with a couple of months ago. And they'll give us an update and talk about timeframe and process and those type of things.
Okay.
We create, if you'll note on the board, we should start on the agenda that Carol will not be here, but Blake Esselston. I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly. Will be here in a scare.
I'll just say Blake.
That didn't happen until after the agenda had gone down.
It's on the bottom side, okay. It's on the backside.
And then, under Unfinished Business, we'll have update on street assessments for Langtree Village and Eagle Ridge. Again, we're still working on that. We did get some prices from DOT, but we felt the prices were very low. So, we are working with Wizards and Ravenell to get some more accurate figures that we can carry back to the board and to the community.
But don't we want the numbers to be very low?
Well, if... We want to be accurate with the numbers. We want to be accurate with the... We didn't feel like the numbers were accurate because we didn't want to go in and undersell to the residents. And then, when they signed the petition and it came in much over, for them to be upset. So, we wanted to make sure we had accurate numbers.
Well, hopefully, we'll get someone that will be as close to DOT as, you know...
Right. We just felt uncomfortable about saying, "Hey, these are... These numbers are correct." We wanted to make sure that we were as close as possible.
Okay.
And then, Kendall will be here as well to update on some of our sewer projects and some of the happenings from our smoke testing, the trailer park issues that we've dealt with and some repairs that are being made. So, Kendall will be here for that. Then, we have the Appointment Committee.
Yes, sir.
And then, we'll get to the Consent Agenda. Number one is applications for elderly or disabled exclusion, pages 34 through 37. And they are recommended for approval by staff. Number two is application for disabled veteran exclusion. And that is recommended for approval by staff. Number three, application for present use value. And again, that is recommended for approval by staff. Number four is application for property tax exclusion on pages 42 and 44. Again, recommended for approval by staff. And then, number five, we have budget amendments in your agenda packet. And then, Allison has a package that we'll go over as well.
So, I'll start with what's in your agenda book first on page 45. I do want to point out, because we're closing out our year, we do have some that are for the prior year. And then, we have some for the near. You can tell the difference by the numbers at the top. If it's a three-digit number up in the 500, 600s, that's going to be for prior year. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew about that. First is for the Sheriff's Office. They are anticipating additional controlled substance tax funds in the amount of $2,149.76. We have a budget amendment for school sales tax. This is Fund 113. The Articles 40 and 42 that are required to be set aside for school capital or to retire debt for school capital. As you all know, the sales tax did come in much higher than we anticipated this year. And that's true for the schools as well. So, we are adjusting their figures to actual. So, we collected $673,377.67 more in that fund. For hospitalization, we are requesting to reallocate $9,600 from insurance and bonding to professional services. This is additional funds to cover the wellness program that's maintained by UNC Healthcare. But we just have more employees participating, which is a good thing. But our costs have gone up with that. For separation allowance, we are requesting to reallocate $9,764.22 from salaries and wages in the Sheriff's Office to cover separation allowance and fringes. This is due to additional retirements that were beyond what was anticipated for the year. You have a budget amendment for Wayne Net for $100. As you know, we are closing that fund out as of this year. We did have a little bit of, I think, a small invoice left to pay and needed to appropriate some funds for that. So, that will take care of that fund.
Excuse me, question?
Yes, sir.
Going forward, any funds that we may have on outstanding billing that comes in, you are not putting into the Wayne Net? You're just putting it over into EMS?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. For facility services, they are requesting to reallocate $10,910.06 from electricity. This is to cover salaries and wages and holiday pay just to true up their salaries number to what the actual year-end amount was. And this is coming from existing monies. I will go over two of these at the same time, number 589 and, I believe, it's 590 for wages. And HCCBG, that's the Home Community Care Block Grant. Both of these are coming from the same source, but they're additional funds for wages and the program at Services on Aging. And it was CARES Act funding that actually was just approved by the state at the very last minute. They were able to get that spent down, but it was very quick. And we... Since we didn't have a meeting in that interim, we had to go ahead and... We had to do it today. So, that's just adjusting our books for that additional money. So, I'm going to go now to number five for the Sheriff's Office. They're requesting to reallocate $26,252 from professional services to maintenance contracts. This was an unanticipated expense of annual maintenance on mobile field reporting software. And they are reallocating funds to cover that. For the library, they've received a grant for $50,000. This is from the Library of Services and Technology Act. This will be used to convert a retired EMS vehicle into a library bookmobile. And that will cover those... That will cover that project. And that's all I have for the agenda book. So, if you go to your separate packet now, I believe the first one in that packet is number 617. So, this budget amendment is to true up our CARES Act funding. And to just for clarity, CARES Act is different than the ARP funds that we are getting. So, CARES Act money we received much earlier in the year. We are truing that up to match up with the final reports that we submitted to them. As you can see, we made payments to municipalities. We had an appropriation of $200,000 to United Way. And the remainder says transfers to other funds. That's because this was used to pay for public safety salaries, as we've discussed. So, that will find... That will close out that report for us. Your next budget amendment is number 618. This is for two capital projects, 911 Center and the County Debt Project Fund. That fund covers the finance software, voting equipment, construction of towers, and radio equipment. We are adjusting our books to just match up for the year-end for the debt that we closed on. It was $10 million. And we are submitting for reimbursements to... For expenditures that were made prior to that debt so that we can get that money back. But this budget amendment is just adjusting our books to match up with the proceeds.
But we'll be able to get most of that back?
Yes, we should. We should. We have done a reimbursement resolution on all those projects. So, we should be pretty well-covered and be able to recapture all of that that we borrowed for.
So, when you're saying transferred to other funds, that is a repayment back to us?
Right. Right. And we may... I may actually end up coming back to you with another one for additional transfers out. But we've not closed those projects yet out. And until I do, I don't want to... I don't want to finalize any transfers. But this is what I knew I could take back to the general fund.
And this was back to 1920?
It is. It's back to... We started spending some funds in 1920 and then this year. So, it covers like a two-year period. Your next budget amendment is number 595 for Register of Deeds. These are additional funds that are owed to the state in the amount of $10,124. These additional funds are owed to the state because they've collected more than was anticipated. So, once they collect... Once their revenues go up, then the amount they have to pay to the state goes up. For Central Services, we have a budget amendment in the amount of $13,670. This is to anticipate and appropriate reimbursement from Gateway for fuel purchases. I believe this was due to the fuel shortage at the time. Am I right about that? Does that sound right? They use... There was a... I think during the fuel shortage, maybe the city had shut theirs down to Gateway. So, they used our ride express cards to fill up. I believe that's what it was covering. But Gateway did reimburse us for it. For the Sheriff's Office, they are requesting to anticipate and appropriate $12,052. This is insurance proceeds due to a vehicle accident to a Dodge Charger. It's being allocated to vehicles, which means they will be replacing that car. For Services on Aging, we are asking to appropriate donations in the amount of $5,693.75. These are additional donations they received above the budgeted amount. And so, that will carry over to the next year. And they will use on program-specific expenditures. 4H is pretty much the same explanation. They collected fees in the amount of $9,190.80. These funds will be carried over to the next year to use on program supplies. I don't think their program activity is quite as high due to the pandemic. So, that money will carry over to the next year. For fire districts, I believe we had one like this at the last meeting. But as you all know, the fire district money, as we receive that in, we have to turn around and pay it back out. We did have some additional funds come in for property tax, vehicle taxes, and sales tax for the fire districts above what we budgeted, even after the last budget amendment. So, this is to cover those remaining payments for the fiscal year-end.
So, this is over and above what we blew at the last meeting?
That's right. That's right. June was a very high month with sales tax. For Board of Commissioners, they are requesting to appropriate funds for dues and subscriptions in the amount of $36,365. This is really just a budgeted line item that was erroneously omitted from the original budget. It is a normally budgeted item. So, this is not new. It was just... It was just an error and was excluded from the budget. So, we are requesting to anticipate fund balance in the amount of $36,365. And that's specifically for the Eastern Carolina Council membership dues.
That's just one?
Yes, sir. They're... They're based on, is it population and...
Yeah, they are based on population, yes.
For the Sheriff's Office, they are requesting... Well, I say they are requesting. We... I don't know how to explain this one, Greg. This is a capital outlay of $29,000 for sonar equipment that will actually be used by the fire departments, the dive team, water rescue. But we are paying it out of the Sheriff's Department line item because they also have a dive team. And this will be used to purchase sonar equipment that I believe they needed during the last water rescue, had to borrow the equipment. And so, they felt like this was... This was really a need. And so, we are requesting to appropriate fund balance for this expenditure. And this will be used, I think, community-wide, not just for one fire department.
Again, I have a real issue of a $29,000 cost for sonar equipment. I mean... Most marine... Most boats have sonar. And they didn't cost any $29,000. So, I'm just... I just have a problem with that huge amount.
It is specifically for look for lost and people who have drowned. It is specifically to do that. So, it is... It really is a necessary piece of...
If my sonar on my boat can pick up a fish this size, I would imagine it could pick up larger items as far as on the screen. And so, I'm just wondering why we're talking about $29,000? Chair, can you help us out here a little bit? Can you look it up? I mean, it's specialized equipment. And it's more than just a sonar, right? And the equipment and everything that goes with it?
The computer and...
It's the computer. It's a double range. It operates at different frequencies than a fish finder does. Has a split range. It'll find an order structure in very minute detail.
Weapons as well. I mean, what I understand...
Show the actual body, you know, or whatever you're looking for. It's towed... It's not... It's not one that mounts to the boat. It's one that drops down with a cable. And it's towed behind the boat. So, it's almost... It's a unit probably three foot long. It is the actual receiver. The receiver is mounted to the hull or anything like that.
Well, I would certainly hope it'd be a higher resolution and so forth. That $29,000. But I just... All right, I'll hush.
I mean, I kind of sort of questioned the price too. But I mean, my thing is, how often are we going to use this piece of equipment?
More than, I think, more than we would like to.
It was...
Yeah. Especially during the week long water rescue, we had to have one borrowed. And so, that was...
I mean, I understand that. And I know that at that time. I'm saying before that, when do we need one last? Before that, when do we need one last? Before that, when do we need one last? Is the question that I'm asking. I understand. I know the crisis and I know what happened recently. But I'm just saying, how often have we need this piece of $30,000 equipment? Is that I'm asking? And do we need to spend that much money? And then, when you can go somewhere else and get something a lot less detailed because we don't use it like that? That's the point that I'm trying to make. You know what I mean? It is... It sounds good. But I don't want to use this crisis and the loss of life to buy a piece of equipment. And that's what it seems like to me. And that's the problem that I'm having. Wasn't bought before then. Why are we spending $30,000 on that? If a crisis only happens once every 10 years and we're borrowing that piece of equipment, what difference would it make to borrow that piece of equipment then? So, that's the issue that I have.
I agree. I mean, you speak like it's a problem or something's wrong with borrowing. I mean, we need to have some type of relationship with all of law enforcement to be able to use specialized pieces of equipment that are not used on a daily basis. I mean, there's nothing wrong with borrowing it every... When needed.
We... It's... It was a request.
A big part of everything we had on that operation was borrowed. We had Johnson County Command Center. We were borrowing the sonar. We were borrowing boats. This piece of equipment has been asked for for several times. I mean, it has been asked for several times. And it's always been denied. And I'm going to kind of compare it to... A fire engine today, a cost in the neighborhood of $650,000, $700,000. You buy... You're spending that kind of money on a piece of equipment that you hope you never use. But when you need it, you need it. I just... The dedication that our people put in to protecting us, I think it's our obligation to at least supply the equipment that they need. Because on the particular instance that we just had was so tragic. But not a single thing had been requested from the county authorities, paid reimbursement for fuel, reimbursement for time. This is the only thing that has come up that that particular group needs. And if they had to turn in expense reports for that particular instance, and there's been others, would have far exceeded the cost of this equipment.
Chair, I understand what you're saying. But that's why we volunteer. That's why we do the jobs that we do. And I don't want to use that as an excuse for buying a piece of equipment. Once again, if we've been without a Mobile Command Center, we've been without all of these things. But this is the one piece of equipment that may seem like it's the most important. But what I ask is, how often are you going to use the equipment? So, we have $30,000 just sitting around that we might not use. Hopefully, we don't have to use, like you say. Now, a fire truck, something different. You know something's going to catch on fire soon. And you can't go borrow it in time to get to that fire. So, therefore, you have to have it. Which, I mean, that's something different with having a sonar system that if Smithfield, you did call Smithfield or Johnson County or... Wherever. And, oh, we can have it there in 45 minutes. Versus a fire truck, you can't borrow that from somewhere. So, I guess, like I said, I mean, I understand it. But at the same time, it's just $29,000 that we want and need from the way that I'm looking at it. And I just see that that may be because of... I mean, I'm pretty sure there's other pieces of equipment that might be needed that's far more important than this. And I just don't... I just don't understand personally. But my thing is, finding something that's in a better price range. $5,000, maybe $10,000. And most that could probably do most of what they need.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that we pull this budget amendment and get some further information on it.
I'd take it.
Mr. Chair, I just have a comment. When the bodies were found, can anybody elaborate? Did this piece of equipment help find the bodies? Or were they found without this equipment?
By understanding that the... The Canons, was it the Canons that found?
Sir?
We do not need to be discussing that instance with the camera rolling. I don't know the whole... We owe that to that family. I would think that... I think that piece of equipment comes from out of state. But I'm not puzzled by that. I know we had people from South Carolina and somebody from the mountains. But I can't remember exactly which. Because some brought dogs and some brought other things. I'm not really... I'm not sure.
Again, my... You know, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to the family. My question is, did this piece of equipment aid in the finding of the family members? That's my question. If we don't know it, then that's okay. But that's what... You know, that would give me a chance to weigh in properly.
I would think that the equipment played a huge role in maddening that river during the eighteenth. Whether it was the reason why that person was found or not, I don't know. But I guarantee you, they used in the whole process of maddening that as far as they went.
See, the river, people understand that there's anything and everything in that river. I mean, logs, tires, parts of cars, guns, whatever. I mean, there's things in that thing. And I could make a phone call and ask the person that was in charge.
That'd be great.
Let's just pull it, get some more information. Do we need a motion to pull it? I saw move.
I think anytime you want something taken off, you can send it on the any commissioner can ask it to be taken off.
Okay.
Vote on it or just get more information like the commissioner's asking.
But that's fine. But I think it's a mistake to take it off. That's where I stand on it. I mean, you know... And I'm not using volunteers as an excuse. But right around the corner, the same thing is going to happen to the fire service and this service to happen to EMS. We're right... We're on the door of our tax rate being to go up 10 or 15 cents a hundred just for fire protection because the power volume is at the point. It's right around the corner. So, I mean, so we can kick this down the road and not provide the equipment that they need. But if that's what y'all feel like, that's fine. But I'm going to continue to fight for this budget amendment.
I agree that we take a vote on whether we should pull it or not.
Excuse me. You want to take it off of the consent agenda and then vote on it individually? To do it that way so somebody who is against it doesn't vote against the whole consent agenda?
Shouldn't we do this in a regular meeting? Sir?
We can... We can vote on this in the regular... On the regular meeting. But we do not need to discuss and go into detail that particular instance. I mean, out of respect for the family, we just... We don't need to go into details on that instance. That's... I think that's... I am just simply asking, Mr. Chairman, that we get more information before we just approve it through the consent agenda. So, that's the only reason I'm asking that we, you know, postpone this for a couple of weeks for us to get some more information. If it were that important,
If it were that important, it would have been in the budget that we just passed. So I'm just asking for more information.
And I mean, Mr. Chairman, my thing is, if it's been put off all these years, they've been asking for it, maybe it was a piece of equipment that prior boards felt like it wasn't needed.
I don't think it come to the board. It never came, it never came to the board.
So why didn't nobody on the board fight for it then? It's the question that I ask.
The, the actual uh, people that were in charge made a comment about needing some equipment and they actually uh, those two departments actually do water rescue for all of Wayne County, for all of Wayne County as a volunteer service. Uh, they're the ones, they're the uh, members of those departments and the people of those fire districts actually fund the water rescue, Air Mac, Air Mac uh, water rescue team, which work in conjunction with the Sheriff Department's dive team as well. And uh, this piece of equipment was asked to be appropriated for that purpose, to be able to help both pieces because their finances did not allow them to keep buying equipment needed to do the service that they're providing for all of Wayne County. Therefore, their fire service districts were actually the ones that are funding the actual uh, equipment and that's the reason they asked for it.
But that's fine, that's fine, sir, but my, like I said, once again, it just seems like we're using this tragedy for to, to get a piece of equipment and that's the part that I don't like. So, but it's fine, however we vote on it, it's fine.
I have a, I have a request to pull this one, uh, which is, which is fine, we can pull it, uh, but do we want, do we want to bring it back up during the, the regular meeting? Is my question.
Mr. Chairman, I'm asking if we can get some, pull it, get some additional information on it, uh, and then we can bring it back uh, in two weeks. I don't think two weeks is gonna hurt, hurt anyone and we can get some additional information on it.
We can do that.
I'm sorry I created this such a controversy, but needless to say, I'm just asking for more information.
And I, Mr. Chair, I'd like to know some additional information too. I mean, I don't, I think that, you know, our first responders should have everything that they need, um, and I, I don't think two weeks is gonna be too long of a delay.
Okay, move on.
Okay. The last budget amendment in your packet is number fifteen, the Sheriff's Office. They are anticipating ninety-two hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-four cents in additional insurance proceeds due to a vehicle accident. And that is all the budgets.
Um, no other questions on budget amendments, we'll go to number six. Motion to establish a public hearing on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at nine thirty a.m. for a request to change the name of Jerusalem Road to Jerusalem Church Road within, within the Indian Springs Township and the Seven Springs Postal District. And I'll turn that over to Barry.
This, um, this request came from the property owners on Jerusalem Road. Uh, this road is actually um, just right off of Drummersville Road, just south of Seven Springs. It extends over into Lenore County. When it extends into Lenore County, the name changes to Jerusalem Church Road. So our side's Jerusalem, Lenore County is Jerusalem Church Road. And the property owners on our side have requested this changed so that the name is the same, they're requesting Jerusalem Church Road. Um, it has seemed to have caused some confusion with the residents and with deliveries and mail. In the past, they have one side as Jerusalem Church and the other one is just Jerusalem. So they're asking that their side be changed. Um, there currently are three property owners um, on the Wayne County side, um, but eight separate addresses, of course, several of those addresses are on the same property. Um, but, but again, we do have this petition in front of you. We are just asking that you hold a public hearing um, in a month, um, so we can advertise it, let the property owners know when it'll be and that way they'll be able to comment if they do have any comments.
There's not before people that's involved at the present time?
Right.
And they're the ones that are requesting it?
That's right.
Do you know how many properties over there?
How many properties?
Yes.
Uh, there's probably, six. There are, looks like about six properties.
Okay.
Um, which some of them cross the road, it's the same property that they own, but the road kind of cuts through it. But there's six properties, but some of them have common ownership, so I think there's really just three separate property owners um, for those properties.
One, one man owns that and one rental.
Right, and a rental, there is a rental there.
Yeah.
But the, uh, one of the property owners, actually one of the addresses already using Jerusalem Church Road, um, the one closest to the Lenore County line, they're already actually using that, um, but, but it still causes confusion because the sign still says Jerusalem. But if this does get approved, we'll notify the post office, we'll adjust the signage, um, now and when will get updated, so we'll make sure all of that is followed through um, if the change is made, so.
Now's the time to do it before we get more development.
Right.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Another question's on number six. Uh, number seven, motion to approve Gander Lake subdivision, phase six B, final plat as recommended by the Wayne County Planning Board.
All right, yeah, this is, um, this is a final plat, so uh, basically all the improvements are in with this subdivision. Um, it is at the end of, well, I say at the end, but basically on Pikeville Princeton Road at the county line, as far as you can go in Wayne County, uh, the existing subdivision on the right, Gander Lake. This is an extension of one of the streets, Artesa Drive. Uh, they are gonna be putting in ten additional lots at the end of that. Eventually, this drive will circle on around and connect with the rest of the subdivision kind of on the east side of this. Um, but anyway, this does, unless said, there are streets in, we do have a built standards letter from DOT, um, and the planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval.
How many houses can be built in this area here?
There, um, I believe there are eighty, maybe around eighty left in the subdivision that could be developed.
It was a total of about two hundred, right?
Yeah, about two, two fifty total, but um, so actually we're, I think we're getting ready to get one of the last phases in. They're gonna do a large final phase coming up soon that may actually just about finish this one out. This one's been going on for probably well over ten years now, uh, in phases, you know, as it goes, but it looks like they're finally starting to get to the end of this one, so.
I think they'll go across the highway now and start doing that.
Yeah, there's some more land over there, I, I, I don't know, there's a lot of vacant land around there, so we'll see where they go next.
Any additional questions for Barry?
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
All right, thank you, Barry. Um, number eight, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two, resolution amending the Wayne County Personnel Policy. Uh, basically what this is doing is adding uh, before any dismissal occurs, adding the assistant county manager, uh, either the department head must talk to the manager or the assistant county manager and get concurrence.
So, Ms. Tanaka, that was not it?
That was not it.
You did not see anybody before this was put in the resolution?
Um, Chip, Chip was kind of handling these things as well and we did, just want to make clarifications on this as recommended by our attorney. And because manager, if it is appealed, has to be the final uh, say-so under our personnel policy. Um, then number nine, motion to approve work authorization fifteen, amendment one, corporate area expansion phase two and work authorization number one, uh, apron pavement rehab uh, for the Wayne Executive Jetport. Uh, again, this is the grant we received from the Department of Transportation, um, and there's a match that is involved, but the match can be used with ARP funds.
Yeah, this was a three point seven million grant.
Yes. Very much so.
It'll cost us four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
We'll take that.
But we, we can't, transportation is a, a allowable use under ARP.
Yes, sir.
And then number ten, motion to approve the sale of surplus property at six two one Slaughter Street, Goldsboro, jointly owned with the city of Goldsboro as requested by the city.
Hello, to Andrew.
Good morning, um, excuse me. So number ten, eleven, um, on your agenda, both of those were requests from the city. You have maps in front of you. Um, it, it appears that the city approved these, one of them was actually last July and one of them was last November, and then they were never sent over to us for approval. Um, so they followed up with us, uh, with us the last couple of weeks. Both of these are previous tax foreclosures, uh, they've already gone through the upset bid period, uh, they were advertised to the adjoining property owners as well. My understanding is signs were put on the property during the upset bid process. So these would get these back on their tax rolls, uh, and the money's already been paid to the city of Goldsboro, they just realized when uh, they went to go do the deeds that they actually never came in front of us, so all the proceeds would be spread, split evenly.
Any questions for Andrew?
Um, and then under new business and, and Mr. Chairman, I do apologize, we do have an adjustment to the agenda. Um, I'd like to add a number five under new business. Uh, this was done on Thursday at our DSS meeting, uh, discussion of requests from the Department of Social Services Board to send out a request for qualifications to begin looking at the privatization of child support services. And our executive director or our director, Kim McGuire, will be here as well as, um, uh, and will also have represented from the DSS board. Uh, but again, currently seventeen counties in the state have privatized, privatized their uh, uh, child support services. Uh, this doesn't mean we're doing that, it just means we're looking at the options that are available to us and so see what we can do to hopefully increase some of our numbers. Um, but that will be a walk-on under number five and Kim will be here and she'll have some information that she'll give you at that time. Um, but again, we'll go back to number one under new business, discussion and possible approval of architectural firms for DSS and health department building with recommendations by the Facilities Committee and, uh, excuse me, Commissioner Daughtry, did you wanna?
Well, we, uh, of course, put out the RFQ for the architect. Um, we had nine respondents, we narrowed that down to four, we interviewed four last Wednesday.
Yes, sir.
Um, great presentations, uh, very close, very hard decision to make, uh, but we did in fact select Mosley Architect, uh, out of Rawland to actually be the architect for the new building. Uh, so we would be making a motion for approval, uh, and asking uh, that we enter into negotiations on the contract for the architect.
And then the contract would have to come back in before final approval by the board commissioners?
After y'all negotiate.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
And then number two, the presentation by Finance Director Allison Speight of Quarterly Financial Statement for the County of Wayne, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, twenty-one, uh, through April thirtieth of twenty-one. And then Allison will do, uh, the quarterly for travel, uh, our, our Tourism Development Authority, uh, through the same period.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we do have a great deal on our agenda today, uh, and I'm just throwing this out there for a suggestion, we might want to delay those two presentations until our next meeting.
Well, I say that, they generally last about fifteen minutes or so, is that correct?
It is, it's totally up to you all, these are, um, these are through Ju, I'm, I'm gonna actually discuss through June and I'm gonna discuss our money and fund balance, that, there's a couple of those things that commissioners had requested from me, so it's, it's just totally up to you, I can do it either way.
And I agree, I'm just throwing that as a suggestion.
Uh, Allison and I went through the presentation yesterday, it really is fairly straightforward and, and it should be. She did a really good, she did a really good job on it, so.
All right, good.
Um, and then number four, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three, a resolution accepting the American Rescue Plan Act, uh, funds and accompanying grant project ordinance. Uh, ver- very simply, and Allison correct me if I'm wrong, we have done capital project ordinances in the past that are multi-year ordinances, uh, that, that carries a budget over multi-years. This is just carrying grant funding over multi-years. This is accepting the money, putting it to a grant fund that we can, uh, carry over multi-budget years. Are you, are you happy with that explanation?
Yes, and I'll do, since I'll be up there anyway with the financials, I'll be glad to go into a little bit more detail, but yes, that's, good.
Sorry. Uh, and then we would have the walk-on number five, uh, discussion of requests from DSS to send RFQ for privatization and Kim will be here for that. Uh, then we'll have public comments, uh, county managers' report, board of commissioners' committee reports, closed session. Uh, again, then we need to probably leave, uh, those who are planning to go to, um, uh, Lenore Community College for the announcement of the Global Transport Economic Development Region, uh, that'll be at one o'clock, so we probably need to leave about twelve fifteen. Uh, I do have the Suburban, if anybody would like to ride with me. And then closed session and then that's all I have.
Okay, uh, getting back to, uh, going to Kinston to the jet port or wherever we're going.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'm having a problem with communication. I mean, why would they plan something on the day that they know we meet? Uh, and there's several other events that is planned. I talked with Joel this morning, there's got to be more communication going on between the county, the city and some of the groups, I mean, this, this, it just irks me that they were planning something on the day that they, this board's been meeting on first and third Tuesdays forever and they know that.
Mr. Chair, I concur with you, um, the city of Goldsboro is having a dedication for the hub today and I would have loved to be there, being that I was part of the process, but uh, again, we're having our meetings on Tuesday and I think that each and every one, they know we have our meetings consistently, so I agree with you, um, Chairman Akon.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody, but it's just we've, there's too much going on to, to, to not to know what's going on. I mean, it's, it's, okay, I'll leave it at that.
Yes, sir.
All right, we've got ten minutes before now, uh, are we gonna do the closed session today?
Yes, sir.
Lengthy one. Ma'am?
Lengthy one.
A lengthy one, we can't do it in ten minutes. And I know going to Kinston is very important, but I feel like the, the business of Wayne County is more important. Well, I'm not real sure that that won't plan by design. All right, I better push. Yeah. All right, we're, uh, be back at nine, we're journeying the fridge into meeting, be back at nine o'clock, start the regular meeting.